All right. Thank you, Mr. Dunfeld. Well, good afternoon, everybody who has tuned in to the meeting and as always, my fellow council members and staff. This is a continuation of the virtual special meeting that was convened at 4:00 PM today, Monday, June 29, 2020. The first part of the meeting was a closed session to discuss the litigation involving the RJ Reynolds Tobacco Company suing the city of Edina. We finished that closed meeting session which was held pursuant to Minnesota statute under an attorney-client privilege. And now we've moved back into open session, and I think the public has been invited to observe this meeting as well. And the purpose of this meeting is to discuss a potential community face masking policy. We've had many, many folks in our community asking about this issue, concerned about it from a public health standpoint, and frankly, on both sides of the issue. And because we didn't have a meeting scheduled until the 21st of July due to the intervening 4th of July festivities, we decided to couple this particular topic of a potential community masking policy along with the closed session that we had regarding the RJ Reynolds tobacco lawsuit. And so yesterday, I think we all received probably early evening the memorandum from Manager Neil, who worked on this diligently over the weekend. There was a background memorandum authored by our city management fellow Reece Kareem, and then Manager Neil had the executive order that was issued by the city of St. Paul that provided for, I think, mandatory mask-wearing in certain conditions. Same thing with the city of Minneapolis, a mayoral proclamation there. We had the advantage of having a copy of a public health emergency order from Summit County, Colorado, that was nuanced in particular ways. And then Manager Neil also went through the effort of putting together a potential proposed mayoral emergency public health order for the city of Edina to facilitate discussion. I did note in that particular document that there were still some references in there to Summit County, Colorado towards the end. And I thought that under the circumstances where we had relatively short notice, Manager Neil did a very exemplary job of getting issues in front of us. And Manager Neil, with those comments in mind, I will turn it over to you to kind of walk us through what you did in preparation for this meeting in a little bit more detail and kind of frame up the discussion for us. And before you do that, I would just comment that it didn't take long for our citizenry to hear about this conversation we were going to have today. I think I was up until 1:00 in the morning reading emails, and they kept pouring in all night long. There were many of them in there again today. And our residents, I would say, a lot of passion on both sides of the issue. And so it's going to be an interesting council conversation today about this whole idea of a potential masking policy for the city of Edina. Manager Neil?
Thank you, Your Honor, and thank you for that recap of the last couple of weeks. We did schedule this discussion at this time because we needed to have the closed session around the RJR lawsuit. So apologies for not getting that information out to you sooner. It was an opportunity, given that we had the council together this afternoon, to talk about it. So we added this item to the agenda kind of at the last minute. But there have been expressions of interest by council members about whether or not we should have a mandatory community masking policy. So I did ask our management fellow to do some research, and that research was included in yesterday's background packet. That included the two orders of Minnesota cities that have gone ahead and issued mandatory policies, one in St. Paul and one in Minneapolis, as well as some kind of recaps of discussions along the lines of a mandatory policy in Rochester and also in Duluth. Neither of which city went forward with a mandatory policy. I have shared with you the Summit County example.
They do think, Manager Neil, just as a corrective, didn't Duluth go forward with a mandatory masking policy in public facilities?
In public facilities, yes.
Okay, thank you.
But not in the community.
That's correct.
We have taken essentially the proposal that's with you right now, included in the packet, was an adaptation for Edina proposal, was an adaptation of the Summit County Public Health Order and adapting it to Minnesota legal structure and also to some organizational structure references to the city of Edina as well. Given all that, we have had a very large amount of public input on the matter. My personal recommendation to you is that I do not recommend the adoption of a mandatory community masking policy. I do not doubt the value of masking in the community. I know there are some folks who gave you input that they do doubt it. I do not doubt the value of it from a health standpoint. However, I'm concerned that adoption of such a policy takes us out of step with the governor's office, the CDC, and Minnesota Department of Health, all of whom we have followed pretty faithfully during the pandemic process. And the other concern I have is around enforcement and just enforcement of the ordinance or the action in general. I think it has some difficult enforcement challenges with it. We are seeing that play out in other parts of the country as well as folks begin to be more challenging in terms of how it is being enforced again in other parts of the country. So those are my two concerns about it. And however, if this is going to be a policy for this community, it needs to be an act of, in this case, this has been constructed as an act of the mayor in terms of our emergency operations plan. And I'm happy to answer any questions that anybody would have from a staff perspective.
All right. I noticed as a prequel that in the newspaper today, they had noted that we were going to have this discussion today, as well as the city of Mankato and the city of Rochester. The city of Rochester had looked at this already, I believe, and decided they were going to not do anything with respect to a mandatory masking policy, whether indoor or outdoor, and now are looking at the issue with respect to public facilities. Then I think in Mankato, they're looking at a mandatory indoor masking policy, or at least a community, you know, public service type of strategy, I think, where they would develop some kind of effective communication strategy of encouraging people to use masks. So concerned probably about the same things you're concerned about in terms of enforcement. So having set the framework for this, council members, I know that the information that we have received has been, and usually Edina fashion, I would say, articulately expressed regardless of what your view of the world is on masking. People quoting studies that may or may not be relevant or may or may not be scientific in basis is maybe a better way to put it. I can tell the council that this morning, I was able to have a phone conversation with Mike Osterholm that many of you have seen on television, was our former state epidemiologist and is now over at the University of Minnesota. And he cautions that a lot of the studies are not good, and he's not satisfied with some of the studies that he's seen that are claiming to come to certain conclusions based on a scientific sort of decision-making basis. But nonetheless, he thinks that wearing masks is a good thing. He did tell me that in about three weeks, he's expecting to see a study involving cloth face masks. And he's got 20 of the world's leading experts modeling how well these different types of face masks, these different type of cloth face masks work in terms of preventing the transmission or the spreading of the disease. And so somewhere in the near future, we should have some further information that helps us in this regard. Nonetheless, if you ask Mike Osterholm, does he wear a mask when he goes out in public, he would say yes, he does. His number-one mantra was distance, 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 that social distancing, physical distancing is the best precautionary method we can use. And then also discussed this. I think we all believe that any decision we need, that we make, needs to be a science-based decision as best we can do it under the circumstances, thinking that this virus has only been around since February, which creates some difficulties in being able to do it. But I don't think any of us can deny the fact that this virus that creates respiratory illness, sometimes lethal, has really changed the world. And so here we are in our little corner of the world, trying to determine, based on the experience that we know about to date, whether we should be thinking about imposing some kind of a mandatory mask policy or some variation thereof that isn't mandatory, or some kind of a strategy, I guess would be a better way to put it, that isn't requiring the use of masks. So I'm sure that many of our council fellow colleagues have thought about this, may have questions they want to ask, may have comments they want to make. I know Member Stottin has circulated some communication on it, I believe. At least he shared some of his thoughts with me. And so if anyone would care to lead off, we're certainly willing to start, ready and willing to start this conversation about the pros and cons of some type of potential masking policy.
I can start.
Member Brendel?
Thank you. I had the chance to spend about a half hour on the phone yesterday with Andy Slavitt. And we had a great conversation. And as you might well imagine, he really had some very common sense and good thoughts for us. And, you know, looking, if we were to mandate masks, I think at best, we would have 75% to 80% compliance. And if we had that, I think that'd be a victory. So in looking at how do we get there? Do we tell people what we want them to do? Or do we create an environment where they choose what is best for them? And hopefully, it is something that we are looking out for each other. In the 150 or so emails that we received, it's about two to one. And support, two to one. So 2/3 of the people we've heard from want the city to say masks are required indoors. And about 1/3 of the people say, let me decide for myself. And it's a variety of reasons that people say, no, I don't want, I don't want the city to pass a mandate. And so looking at that, how do we get to the point where people understand that they are protecting not just themselves, but the other individual? So we've got cancer patients. We've got people with diabetes. We've got people who are in, you know, close of situations where they are afraid to go out in public. They need people to protect, they need the other person to be protected for them to be safe out in public. And how do we get to the point where everyone can go out in public and be safe without, you know, without taking some sort of a stand? Maybe it is education. Maybe it's highly encouraging every business. How do we encourage every business in Edina who serves the public to say, if you're coming in, you need a mask? I don't know that we can mandate every business saying, and a mask will be provided for you. I don't know that we can do that. Does this, if we do, does the city then provide the masks for those businesses to then give those out to customers who want to come into their business? So I am, you know, to use Andy's word, I'm looking for the nuance. I'm looking for the nuance between passing a policy that says masks are required indoors. Does that mean that the person going in that business needs to have a mask? Or does that tell the business, if you want people to walk in your door, you need to provide a mask? I mean, what does this masking policy, how far are we going to go with this? So I think there are, you know, you can peel it away in a lot of ways. But is it the best way we have to fight the spread of the illness? I would say yes. I would say yes, it is.
All right. To the point of peeling the layers away a little bit, one way to talk about this might be to look at the indoor versus the outdoor aspect of it, and maybe take care of the outdoor side of it first as a council. When I talked to Mike Osterholm today, you know, he said, outside, we've all gotten pretty comfortable that things are pretty safe unless you're not properly socially distanced. So even with the protesters opposed to death of George Floyd, they had in the testing afterwards, you know, from being outside, a 1% to 2% infection rate. So that may be a place for us to start, you know. And I've had people that live around Centennial Lakes call me and email me and say, gee, we think you should mandate the use of masks everywhere in Edina, whether it's indoors or outdoors. But I'm not so sure that the outdoor issue is as consequential as a potential indoor situation, that the infections are really taking place indoors. So what are people thinking about in terms of mandating the use of masks outdoors if you can maintain appropriate physical distancing? Member Fisher?
I don't think we should regulate the outdoor part. I think people can, for the most part, have more flexibility with the social distancing and manage that. The other reason, and you hit on it, the outdoors is a natural ventilation system. And what you get when you get indoors is the type of ventilation in a specific building can vary widely. So, for example, the way ventilation systems are designed typically is to mix the air. So whether it's cool air or warm air coming in, depending on the type of season, the idea is to mix it, and then eventually, new air comes in. But the whole idea is whoever's in the room is breathing and spitting and doing whatever, and it's all being mixed around. That's not happening outside. Outside, it's going away. There are some ventilation systems indoors, like a displacement system, which is just drawing the air out of the space immediately, which are relatively safe. But we're not going to know that when you walk into a particular business. So my vote would be, treat them differently. Outdoors, you know, you let people do the best they can, making good judgment. Indoor, we don't have that kind of flexibility.
Well, in the interest of me getting on my way here, I'm going to jump in quickly, and then I think I've said my piece. But one of the points made is that when people are wearing a mask, they're forgetting to social distance. They think they, they're more comfortable being closer to one another. So I think maybe there's, maybe there's, and speaking outdoors, for sure, if in fact, they are not social-distanced outdoors, they ought to be wearing a mask. And we were at Centennial Lakes the other day, and, you know, keeping our distance from other people. There was a woman who was on a phone, and she was kind of weaving by us. And I was very uncomfortable because we were keeping our distance, and then here she comes up behind us. And so it's, it is something to think about. But I do think outdoors, maybe we can do a good job. There are signs. We've got signs in the parks. And maybe we can make some signs that just help people understand that you have to social distance to help us slow the disease.
Okay. Thank you for those comments. And I know you've got some obligations, Member Brendel, that need to be honored and may need to depart before we finish the conversation. So I appreciate your comments on the outdoor part. Maybe we can quickly get through that. Member Anderson, your thoughts on outdoor mandating of use of masks?
I think that'd be difficult personally. I think social distancing is the key, whether indoors or outdoors. You know, I tend to look at outdoor spaces, at least that I frequent, as more exercise venues. I'm on bike paths or somewhere else. And at the golf course, I think that wearing masks there is very, very difficult. The transmission of the disease is going to be based on respiration. So we'll get into the indoor applications, the indoor use is uncertain in this conversation. I'm not as concerned outside about respiration. I think the point's been made that you have a very low incidence of transmission there. So I guess I wouldn't be in favor of that at all. And again, just to go back to Manager Neil's earlier comments, enforcement issues really all throughout this conversation, but especially in that setting, are going to be very, very difficult. But I do, I'm sensitive to Member Brendel's comment about somebody coming up from behind. I noticed this on bike paths, on the nine-mile trail especially. You'll find that in, there are a lot of walkers along those trails. And as a biker, as you approach, to me, it's very important to make certain that that walker is notified of your presence. It's not hard to do. On your left, the top of your lungs gets through pretty easily. And I do find that people will tend to move over if you keep to the outside. Over at Highland Park, on those trails, they're much narrower, and that becomes a little more difficult.
Yeah.
So I, you know, that becomes a little more problematic. But what I have found in almost all instances is that walkers, if they're notified, will tend to move off. So, and by the way, I wouldn't be able to ride a bike with a mask. I think that that would be a pretty difficult challenge. Or I don't see many runners with masks. I don't see that. So in terms of the outside spaces, I'd say that's, for me, I don't think that'd be a good idea.
Good. Thank you. Manager Neil, did you have something that you wanted to comment on? I thought I saw you raise your hand.
No, the custodians are here, and I just needed to have my door shut.
Oh, all right. All right. Thank you. Member Stottin, your thoughts on the outdoor issue?
Yeah, I think it's kind of the overall thing for me. I mean, I think the issue here is, you know, we're trying to balance this need for an obligation we have to protect public health and safety with the burdens we're imposing on people. And the science is pretty clear on the distancing, less clear on the masks. But the distancing really is something that we're able to do outdoors. So I'm not as concerned about the outdoor venue. It's really, I think the mask question boils down to a very narrow set of circumstances where just because of practical realities, you cannot maintain the kind of distancing that's being recommended because of the environment that you're in, whether that be a grocery store, hardware store, and everything. And those are the situations that I think we're looking at. And I would prefer if we are going to impose something, we work hard to make it as narrow as possible.
All right. Did you finish your comment?
Yeah.
Did I lose you? Okay. I think we've got a fairly uniform opinion there, Manager Neil. You, you know, it seems like it's outdoors, no mandate, but we should maybe have a policy or at least a strategy of notifying people to remember to keep your distance, keep your physical distance. So that potentially covers that. Member Stottin, I might come back to you right away with, you know, your thoughts on the balancing test. When we look at potential harm versus potential benefit of masks, let's say, on a mandated basis or no mandate indoors, what are some of your thoughts along those lines?
Well, I'd start by saying that, you know, the number of emails and the passion and the informed nature of the emails shows you that this is an issue that a lot of folks have been thinking about and are concerned about in our community. So I think it's entirely appropriate that we're talking about this. The other thing that is occurring to me is that we, ever since, for the last three months, we have been dealing with these issues that are really challenging. It's about protecting the health and safety of our residents, but also trying to maintain the limits on any intrusions or restrictions. And one that comes to mind to me is, you know, about a month ago, we imposed a curfew in the community. And it was in the middle of the civil unrest associated with George Floyd's death. And there were folks who were concerned that some of that unrest and violence was going to come to our community. And so we had some discussions about whether to impose a curfew or not. And we ultimately decided to do that. And if you think about it, that's a pretty big restriction. That's an imposition. We were telling people to stay off the street, stay out of the public after 8:00 p.m. So one part of this is really thinking about how broad is the restriction? And in that case, we concluded that that was a restriction that was worth imposing. And then the other end of it is, what is the risk of harm if we don't impose the restriction? In that case, we were concerned that there might be violence or vandalism or unrest that would come to the community. Here, it strikes me that a balance, you know, if you're narrowly talking about having people wear face coverings in stores when there's not an ability to socially distance, that's a pretty minor restriction. And it's not going to cause much disruption to people's lives. It's certainly way less than a curfew. It's way less even than the stay-at-home orders that we've had previous to that. And on the other hand, do we know that the face coverings will help? I think I agree with many of the folks, and as you quoted, Dr. Osterholm, you know, that we don't have the science on that yet. We don't know for sure on that. But we also don't know that they're going to harm anything, and we don't know that they won't help. And so here, we've got a very minor restriction, and we've got something that may in fact help in those narrow circumstances when we can't maintain this distancing. And I will say that in many of our stores, we've been doing a pretty good job of it. But there are folks who are concerned about the fact that some people aren't doing that. And I, you know, I think we need to remember that the purpose isn't necessarily to protect yourself. It's to protect the other people from you. And so having this face mask in the stores has become more and more prevalent. And the question is, you know, will that, will we get the distance we need to get without making this deed an order? And I think notwithstanding the challenges of enforcement, one of the things that's our job as elected officials, when we're trying to balance this dilemma between how much restriction we're willing to put on and how much we need to protect people, is we got to draw a line in the sand and say, we think this is the right thing to do. If that means an order that says we need to do it, then I support it.
Okay. All right. Thank you for those thoughts. I think we've lost Member Brendel now. Member Fisher, your thoughts on the indoor aspects of a potential policy?
So coming into this week, if I would have just, you know, just my thoughts and what I've experienced and what I've read on Twitter and all and what I've experienced and what I've read on Twitter and all that kind of stuff, I would have suggested that we gotta keep just trying to encourage people to do the right thing. And maybe we set an example by mandating it on our property. Right, so if it's city-owned buildings, if you're coming into City Hall, if you're coming into our Public Works facility, if you're entering a park building, that you need to wear masks. And then we highly encourage and try to model, um, the kind of behavior we would like to see in other people's businesses and properties. And that was pretty much where I was sitting with this, uh, before I read the 150 to 200 emails, whatever it was. And, and, and Mary was right, it's probably a little more than two to one that wanted to see, uh, some sort of mask policy. And we've been getting all along, people asking for something that could help, um, make them feel safer when they're out and about. And I, and I've tried to think about this and, and it comes down to about four different elements of this. One is just this whole idea of the science, I'm using my air quotes, the science of wearing masks. It's amazing to me how many, um, data points and quotes from experts, people, um, can come up with. And it just shows that we all have access to a lot of information. Um, but a lot of the, a lot of this, the information we were getting was sort of turning it around and saying, you know, we should have a choice to what we're, you know, if we want to protect ourselves or not. And I, and I hope we're all to the point where we understand that the mask is not for protecting ourselves. Um, and, and, you know, so that personal freedom I get and it's really important, but it's about our neighbors. And, you know, my basic understanding is that, you know, human beings are messy. Um, particles are involuntarily coming out of our mouths and noses, whether, you know, it just happens. Um, whether we're talking, singing, yelling, sneezing, or even breathing. And, um, I keep thinking that we all grew up, uh, with our friends and inevitably someone said, say it, don't spray it. Well, that's pretty apropos, right? That's just what we do as human beings. So I don't think there's any disputing in everything I've read. Having a mask on your face will reduce the amount of stuff coming out of your nose and mouth and into the environment around you. And so, so the question is, by reducing that, are we making a healthier environment? And, and a lot of these emails that we got talked about the health hazards of wearing the mask. So we would actually be hurting somebody's health if we told them they needed to wear a mask. And yet our healthcare workers are working sometimes 12-hour shifts with those masks on for all of our benefit. And I, it struck me by how many healthcare professionals sent us emails, um, asking us to, to actually impose this, this requirement. Uh, and it also applies to the retail workers, the folks that are serving us in these businesses. Um, so, and that brings me to my second point is that the employees of these businesses, their need for protection. And, um, in my company, we can have 270 people working from their homes and work just fine. We in fact are not letting people come back to the office until we know they're not at risk. Unfortunately, there are businesses who need their employees on the front lines. And, um, they have to be present, they have to be present in a very real and scary way. Um, the customers on the other hand get to decide if they want to order something online or with a delivery service or whatever, they can make that choice, the employee cannot. And I think about examples where that situation has been at play. Um, and I think about the smoking ban that was put in bars and restaurants, right? Or public spaces. That ban was to protect the employees who had no choice. So the government impinged on the rights of smokers because the employees of those businesses had no choice, couldn't get out of the situation. So it was determined that your freedom to smoke should not cost someone else their life. The third point is just the common good. In my mind, the common good is making a small individual sacrifice for the common. But an example there that we deal with all the time is building sidewalks in our communities. So somebody is going to get stuck with the concrete in their front yard and is going to have to take care of shoveling the snow on that sidewalk. So the rest of the community can travel safely by foot. In this case, the common good is opening up our economy safely, hopefully, and protecting the workers. And then hopefully that would prevent us from going back and shutting everything down. Um, so the individual sacrifice in this case amounts to putting on a mask for 10 minutes when you're ordering your, uh, iced mocha, mocha latte, right? Or you're, you know, going to the grocery store. It's a, in the scheme of things, a relatively small sacrifice for the greater good. And then the last thing I think about is the what if I'm wrong test. Like, if we make a decision, any government makes a decision, and especially concerning when it involves personal freedoms and choices. Um, I always think, if I look at both sides of it, which one is more harmful if I'm wrong? So if we're wrong, um, if, if masks don't do anything, then the worst thing that happens is that we all look silly together for a few months until there's a vaccine or there's some other solution. Uh, but we do it for the good of our entire community and for those that are the most vulnerable. If masks really do make a difference, there will be lives saved. And that's, I think, what this comes down to. I wish we wouldn't have to impose this as a policy or as a mandate. I wish people would just think that they would be willing to make that minor sacrifice. I worry that, um, and I do believe that having the businesses each have to figure this out, puts them in this really bad spot between protecting their employees and trying to make sure they don't alienate some of their customers, one way or another. And by making it, uh, by using the sort of the common good element, which the city can do, we probably level that playing field and say, let's just all do this in these circumstances. Um, I think one of the quotes from, um, one of the many doctors that wrote to us really resonated with me and said, masks work best when everyone wears them. Your mask can protect others and their face mask can protect you. Face masks are one way we can show consideration, respect, and kindness for our vulnerable neighbors. And, um, so I don't know, I, I, I came into this thinking that, you know, we should just encourage, but I could be pretty easily convinced that the best way to really get this done is to actually make it a mandate that when you're walking into a business, that you should put on a mask.
Thanks, Member Fisher. Member Anderson?
Yes, sir. Um, just a, a question for Mr. Knudsen as we get started here. Um, I saw in two or three of the emails that I opened, there was a reference to Minnesota State Statute 609.735. And this is about masking. I, I'm just wondering if that has any real application to our matter at hand? I'm not catching that.
You're still on mute, Roger. There you go.
What was the statute number I didn't catch?
Um, it's, uh, 609.735.
Just give me a minute, I'll take a look.
Thank you. Thank you. So, you know, um, well, let's, let's see what Mr. Knudsen comes back with. Um, let me just mention that, see, all the, everything I've heard here makes sense to me in terms of, of being in a public place indoors and wearing a mask. Uh, I have yet to go into a grocery store without wearing one, even in Eden Prairie. So, you know, it's, to me, it, it, it makes it common sense to do that from my perspective. I also see a fair number of people there without masks. Um, if I drive west 50 miles and go into Annandale, Minnesota, I walk into grocery stores there, I'm one of, uh, a small number of people wearing masks. And so I, it, why is that? Standard of practice? Find anything?
Yes. It says you can't wear, you can't wear anything that conceals your identity except for a bunch of things, including weather or medical treatment. I think if it were really pushed, requirement of wearing a mask would not be in conflict with that statute.
Hmm, yeah.
It is.
That, that may or may not be a reason to create an ordinance, um, but I do think it's a consideration. Um, so, uh, all right, to go back to wearing masks. Um, so, so I noticed that standards differ from place to place. Seems like the further you get away from, uh, the central, uh, metro area, the less likely it is that there's a widespread acceptance of masks. And, and what I, the, the thing that comes forward for me when I review the emails, and I agree that of the emails that we've received, they have been roughly two to one. Um, and I, I noticed that there are, uh, within the scope of those emails and other communications that we receive or, or research, we find that the opinions of medical providers or physicians can be on both sides of the issue. Um, Dr. Fauci has been on both sides of the issue at various times. And why? Because one of the, one of the, the elements that comes forth is masks don't provide immunity. But you can get a false sense of security by wearing a mask and saying, okay, this is, this is it. This will take care of it. And I, I think we're all seeking immunity. We'd all like for this not to be happening. And so we wanna, we, we want to take care of ourselves and others. So there's, there's lots of, there's lots of articles. I read one from the New England Journal of Medicine, which didn't support the wearing of masks. But, but I believe that it's, there's, there's a reason to do that. Uh, I, I do think, I agree with Member Fisher, that you, you can lower the transmission of, of, uh, of elements by, by wearing a mask. So I don't, I don't question that, that's why I wear one. Um, I also compare the, the, the public level of support that was received on, on, uh, the ordinance that was created banning the use of flavored tobacco products in the city of Dina. It was overwhelming, uh, massive. Every single, uh, uh, medical entity, medical provider that took the time to write was in support of that ordinance. Um, all, it, it virtually, I don't recall one lack of, uh, one, one email that was not in support of that ordinance. Um, and yet in this, in this case, we find there are a lot of people who are significantly opposed. Um, so in terms of, of, uh, the, the smoking consideration, I don't, apparently, the, the people that, um, are in support of that ordinance are still some of the people who may not be in support of a mandatory masking, uh, uh, ordinance. And so when we get to ordinances, then the question of enforcement comes up. And I, I find that it's, I think that this would be almost impossible to enforce on a, on a very real basis. That concerns me. I don't know, I, I, I don't know how you'd go about doing it. I saw, there were a couple of emails along the way here that I read, uh, that were relative to kids in cars. I don't know, I, I don't know what you'd do about that. Do you pull them over or do you, uh, uh, what do you do with? Would we attach fines as a matter of enforcement? And then what kind of impact does that have in the community? I can imagine what the emails start looking like then. Um, and I, so I, uh, uh, so enforcement's a big, is a big problem for me. Um, I would far prefer, because the governor has been very assertive about public health considerations in the course of the onset of the pandemic. And I, it, it feels to me that when we move towards the, the concept of mandatory, you must, we say you must. When we move towards that, I would far prefer that to come from the governor's office or even Enupen County, if in fact, um, it's determined as an element that should be in place to protect the public health. Um, i- i- if, even in a limited basis of public facilities, um, it's not a problem at City Hall, it's not a problem at the Public Works Building, it's not a problem here, there. It's a problem in terms of any kind of indoor kid sports. It's a problem in terms of, say, the use of Braymore Arena, it's a problem here and there. Um, I don't want to create an environment in which people choose to do business elsewhere or go elsewhere because, um, they just oppose the use of masks. At the same time, I think that we can, and maybe should have earlier, taken a much firmer stance about communicating and educating people about the use of masks from a, from a mutual respect position as much as a health position. If people feel safer, if you're in a, in a public place with a mask, then there's no reason not to wear one, at least for me, there's no reason not to wear one. Others might feel differently about it. Occasionally though, I've been caught without a mask and bottle of breath. Um, so all in all, I, I, I guess I would stand short of, of mandatory. But I would be very assertive about, um, creating an environment in which people are educated, are encouraged to use masks. And I would also reach out to local businesses and be certain that they have a posted masking policy at the front door. Um, I, I think, uh, there may be some confusion about that. If I'm a, if I'm a person that refuses to wear a mask, just will not, we saw a fair number of those people communicating throughout email as well. If I'm one of those persons and I stand outside some venue that I, I want to go in and they have a firm masking policy, then I guess I can make a decision there if I wanna, if I wanna go in and use that business. Or maybe that business has a mask available. Or maybe I have to go find one if I wanna go into, uh, a, a shoe store and they, they have a masking policy. I can choose to buy shoes someplace else as well. If they don't have a masking policy and somebody is wearing a mask, I don't necessarily think that that prevents them using that store because most of the employees that I see are all wearing masks, I see that. So, um, I guess I would be a proponent of being vigorous about moving forward and educating the public. I would certainly ask businesses to have a firm policy and make certain that that's communicated well. Um, but I, I guess I would stop short of mandating. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Anderson. So, when I talked to, um, Mike Osterholm today, it was after reading a lot of these emails, uh, almost all of them I mentioned earlier, was one in the morning, I think, when I finished up reading that first batch and tried to get them as many as I could today. And some people had studies cited in there, um. I think Osterholm believes that there isn't a really good study out there, as I mentioned earlier, uh, and that with this group that he's convened, they're going to be looking at, uh, how these different, uh, how well these different masks work in terms of protecting the public. Um, what I do know from looking at some data today is that it does seem as though the countries that have, uh, in other parts of the world, and I'll use Vietnam, city of Singapore, um, South Korea, for example, have a lower per capita mortality. Uh, and so those countries with a masking policy, uh, seem to, uh, have a lower per capita mortality than, than countries that do not have that kind of situation. And now as of the 5th of June, the, uh, World Health Organization, uh, has reversed itself and is also recommending the use of masks. And I, I believe the CDC did today as well. Uh, I would join Member Fisher. When you first started talking about this issue, I thought, well, you know, we should just continue, uh, to use the platform of the council to talk to folks about the necessity for masking, let them use their common sense and, uh, and keep appropriate social distancing and also, uh, uh, you know, wear their masks. And you see more and more masks out there. Um, I think it is true that with respect to this particular virus, that the guidance on it is constantly changing. And I think it's because we're learning more and more about it and there's changed circumstances as a result of it, of gaining as a result of it, of gaining further understanding of the virus itself. And so that's why you might see some of these changing points of view over time, whether it's coming out of our own CDC that, uh, is responsible for our country or the World Health Organization or, or some other organizations around the world and including our own Minnesota Department of Health. So when I look at those lower per capita mortality rates in countries with a masking policy, uh, I turn to, um, uh, what, excuse me, here, I'll get this thing turned off. I come to this balancing test that Member Stotin was talking about. And, and I start thinking about what seems like now about a year ago was that stay-at-home order. And you remember, everybody was really complying about that stay-at-home order and, and, and honored it for the most part. There were the exceptions to the rule where certain businesses could be open, uh, that were deemed a necessity for being open, uh, first, of course, frontline, uh, frontline health workers. Then we went to the safer-at-home strategy, uh, we went to a little bit of a softer opening on the economy. And then, as Member Stotin mentioned, we had the curfew that was, uh, in place during the civil unrest. All of those, uh, situations by executive order, the stay-at-home order, the safer-at-home order, the curfew, all of those were more restrictive than what I think we're talking about in terms of a mask policy. And I'll first address, I think, the, the situation with our public facilities. And I think they've done this in Duluth, as I mentioned earlier. For me, this is a lot like tobacco, uh, the tobacco ordinance that we passed where you couldn't, years ago now, where you couldn't smoke in a public building or outside a public building. And in fact, we had a, we had a ban smoking in all public facilities, including in our parks, because we thought it was the right public health message to be sending. And I think the same thing is true now that with respect to public facilities, they ought to be a model, uh, for public health and, uh, we should be requiring masks before we enter into any public facility. So then, uh, i- if I've got that point of view with regard to the public facilities, then we need to turn to the other, uh, element of it, and that is private businesses, uh, grocery stores, drugstores, those kinds of businesses where, uh, we know that the indoor air quality is at much higher risk than outdoor air, as pointed out by Member Fisher. And, and so what do we want to do about it? Do we want to rely on, on people, um, in some circumstances, uh, exercising what they call to be their constitutional rights versus the inconvenience of putting a mask on when you go into a grocery store to make sure that other people are safe? Uh, you see, you're, you've got it on for maybe a half hour at the most and then you come out and, uh, you don't have to have it on again. So when I look at that balancing test and I look at the potential harm versus the potential benefit of masks, um, while I don't personally like the idea of a mask mandate, I, I'm thinking that it's probably something that we should do. And, and to Member Fisher's point about, uh, if in three weeks from now, we see a result from that group that Mike Osterholm was working with that says we don't see, uh, where this particular type of mask is effective or we don't see where masks are effective at all, what have we lost in the process? In the process, we've, we've been able to protect kids that might be going with their mom to the grocery store that have some kind of a health condition, whether it's a heart condition or a respiratory condition. We protected old people, uh, older people that are at risk in the high-risk category. We made sure that all people are, uh, protected that, um, uh, that have some kind of an underlying condition, if they need to go to the grocery store but are fearful about doing it. And I think maybe as importantly is we've given license to all of our merchants to be able to stand at the front door like they do, as I understand, at Whole Foods or at Costco. And they say, you're, you can't come in unless you got a mask because that's their policy. Well, some businesses are, are fearful of doing that because they think they're gonna lose business. But we've actually heard both sides of the coin on that issue. We've heard, we've had emails from people saying, if you impose a mandatory mask requirement, I'm not shopping any diners. But we've also had people tell us that without a mandatory mask requirement indoors, when we go to a retail store, we're not gonna shop any diners. But I think the, the key factor is that we've given merchants the license then to be able to decide whether they wanna, you know, they don't have to decide anymore on their own. We've given them the power to be able to stand at the front door and say, you can't come in unless you're wearing a mask, because we want to protect the workers that are working in here, we want to be able to protect people that are in here as well. So as, as much as I would personally prefer that we, we rely on a good faith of people, uh, and to maintain, uh, uh, common sense and use a mask, uh, I'm comfortable, uh, when I balance the potential harm of not wearing a mask against the potential benefit of not having to wear a mask. I think I come down on the side, I know I come down on the side of mandating it indoors. So, uh, I think that's what we should be doing. I think we should, we should be crafting something, whether it's through a mayoral mandate or, uh, an ordinance, something that, uh, mandates the use of masks when you're indoors. Uh, and in, and it, with respect to the enforcement aspect of it, I'm not so concerned about that. I don't think we're gonna enforce it and I don't want people to use that as an excuse to, to not wear one, because I think merchants then will be saying, you, you gotta have one on. But remember with the stay-at-home order, uh, there were people moving around, it's a safer-at-home order, there were people moving around. We didn't enforce those, uh, ordinances, uh, because we said we weren't gonna enforce them. And with respect to the curfew, what we did there was we, we reminded people, you have to get home, it's after eight o'clock, it's after 10 o'clock, whatever the curfew time was, uh, we didn't cite them for anything and I don't think we would here. But it does give our merchants the, the authority they need from us to be able to stand at the front door and tell people coming in, you, you gotta have a mask on to protect other people, somewhat protect yourself, um, although the data is not clear on that, but certainly protect our workers. So, um, I'm in favor of, um, understanding well what, uh, Member Anderson is talking about. I think that's a step further that Member Fisher is talking about, I think that Member Stotin is talking about. I'm not quite sure where Member Brindle is, uh, in terms of having a, uh, policy that would require the use of masks indoors. So, uh, I think that's, that's a majority of us that, that favors some kind of a mandatory indoor mask policy, especially with respect to our public facilities. And beyond that, I think I'm hearing a majority of our council members saying we should have it, um, with respect to, uh, uh, our stores as well. I am concerned about restaurants. I was in a restaurant at noon today and, of course, people are trying to eat and they can't have a mask on. And, and I think it's important that we think that through carefully. But if you're going to the grocery store, you're going to the drugstore, you're not going to a restaurant, um, I think it makes some sense to, to put them, put that mask on. It's not that much of an inconvenience to put it on for the short period of time you're in the store. Uh, but I am concerned about the restaurant situation and I, I'd like to have further dialogue on that. I'm not quite sure how to handle that.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Member Fisher?
I haven't, I don't, I don't believe, I haven't been in a restaurant, um, since this all started, but my understanding is the way that works is you wear the mask when you're moving through and close to people, but once you're at your table, which have been hopefully distributed for the proper social distancing and everything, um, then, you know, you take your mask off because you're gonna need to, to eat and whatever. Not sure how that works with, you know, when you're placing your order with the waitstaff, but I think there's sort of a combination there. And, and the thing is, with all of this, is there's nuance, there's reality in how you go about things, but I think that's what we all have to wade through, is how do you, you know, how do you, how do you make all that work? I think it starts with, you know, putting the mask on, having the mask with you when you're going into those spaces.
Well, I thi- I can tell you from firsthand experience today that all of the folks working in the restaurant that I was in to meet with some people had their masks on. And that was my first, uh, sort of meeting experience in a restaurant. And, um, and then everybody ate with their mask off, but, um, people were, at least some were putting their masks on as they were leaving the premises. I asked our waitress, did she want me to have my mask on when I was ordering from her? And she, she did not, uh, seem to think that was, uh, an important consideration, but, um, it is nuanced. And I appreciate the, the restaurant portion of the, of the challenge. And a little bit with a haircut, too. You know, I went to get a haircut and, uh, when you got around the ears where you had your, um, mask hooked on, uh, then the barber was really quite adept at just holding your mask to the side of your face and trimming around your ear quickly and then putting it back on. So there's a little bit of nuance there as well. So, um, and I am sensitive to that nuancing, uh, but I think for more conventional retail operations, um, it's not quite as nuanced. Or, as I say, if you're going to the grocery store, you're going into Walgreens, they have that mask on for the short period of time you're in there, and I think most people are already doing that. It's not that much of an inconvenience and balanced against the benefits to, the potential benefits to public health. I would come down on the side of public health. Anybody else have any thoughts about that nuanced part of it relative to restaurants or other facilities like hairdressers or barber shops?
Mr. Mayor, what I would say on that is that with restaurants, barber shops, hair salon and the like, remember that those were among the last to reopen and so with some pretty, um, rigorous industry guidance that I think has helped make those places as safe as they can be. And I think that's where some of the masking has come from. I'm more concerned about these kind of essential places like grocery stores, drugstores, hardware stores that have been open all along, that as Mr., as Member Fisher said, you know, our, our employees who are in there and, and they can't leave without, you know, they have to be there for work and the folks who need groceries have to be there and the folks who need medications need to be there. And I don't want to have them feel like they can't be there because others will, um, go through the minor inconveniences.
Thank you, Member Stotin. Mr. Knutson, uh, to a question that Member Anderson raised earlier, um, do you see any, uh, impediment, legal impediment for us being able to, um, uh, either have an ordinance or the council voting on a, on, on the mayor issuing an order, uh, in this particular area? In the three things, with respect to the three things we've talked about, and that is, uh, you know, that you do not have to wear a mask if you're outdoors unless you're, um, within a unacceptable physical distance of somebody. And then the, the, uh, public facilities aspect of it, where we would mandate masks if you're in a public facility, uh, and then this mandating of masks on, uh, uh, going into any, any, uh, merchant operations as well. You see any, any prohibition, uh, there that we need to be concerned about or any thing we need to be concerned about from a legal standpoint?
I think we're in pretty solid legal foundation to do it, but I'll just say, no one's challenged with one of these yet. So, you know, court hasn't decided it, but I think we have a pretty solid footing for what we're doing.
Okay. All right. Any other thoughts from council members? I wish Member Brindle could have stayed for the balance of the conversation. Member Fisher, anything else? Uh, Manager, yeah, Member Stotin?
I just was gonna say, I, I don't, I think we're gonna need more crafting of the documents before we can finalize. Not sure the word for this question tonight is.
Yeah, I think that's, that, that, that's a good point. And I'm, yeah, I'm concerned that we get something crafted that we can look at, uh, and then, uh, have time to think about, um. But I also know that we don't have another meeting scheduled until the 21st of July and there's, I think if we, if we do believe that there's some urgency here in terms of addressing, uh, this aspect of, uh, public health, that we should move sooner rather than later, I'm just not sure what that means from a staff standpoint. And maybe, uh, Lisa Schaefer, who's with us now, uh, couldn't tell us what she thinks in terms of timing or even Roger Knutson?
Mayor, could I just comment on the process that's laid out in the United City Code? You adopt the proclamation, you will, then the council, if they don't like it, can rescind it.
And I think just to, sorry, just to add to that, if you could be clear on sort of main points that you know that council agrees to, we can go ahead and draft the ordinance, or, I'm sorry, the, um, mayor's order. And then if council for some reason wanted to rescind or change that, then they could choose to call a special meeting. Is there anything I'm missing on that, Roger?
Nope, you got it twisted, right.
Okay. Yeah, I guess I started thinking about ordinances versus, uh, proclamation or, or executive order. So, um, I don't know, Member Stotin, if you've been, if you've been writing things down, uh, I've been trying to track things a little bit, or Member Fisher, or Member Anderson, if anybody's been writing down. I mean, the main po- policy points I think we covered were that we're, we're not gonna mandate the use of masks in an outdoor environment, uh, unless social distancing is an issue and then people should be directed to use their mask. At least that was the way I understood it. And then secondly, with respect to public facilities, uh, as being a model of public health, uh, that we would require masks to enter any public facility of the city of Edina. And that with respect to, um, see, how do we want to characterize that? Any commercial?
I, I would say the key here is these, these indoor spaces, whether that be public facilities or private facilities, where it is not practicable or feasible to maintain appropriate social distancing.
So when you say private facilities, what do we mean by that? Are we talking about retail operations? We're gonna talk, are we talking about all commercial buildings, like an office building?
I think we're talking about public accommodations, places where the public is admitted to shop or, um, purchase things where any member of the public can go in.
Okay.
Gov-, excuse me, Mayor Frye's proclamation, emergency regulation spells out those definitions, so we can take it from there.
All right. Okay. And so with respect to the other emergency proclamation we did during, uh, the times we imposed a curfew, we had the council, uh, vote and then it became a mayoral proclamation, but we had, uh, at least, um, a majority of the council in each of those situations saying they agreed with the articulation of what the curfew ought to be. Here we've got a three-pronged proclamation. And what I hear you saying, Roger, is with respect to, uh, the outdoor elements of it, the public facilities element and the private facilities elements of it, uh, as Member Stotin, uh, indicates, where it's not practical or possible to maintain appropriate physical distancing of six feet, um, we would be mandating the use of a mask indoors. You think you can cover all three of those elements?
I think we can put something together for your review, Mayor.
All right. And then, Member Anderson?
Yeah, thank you. Um, I would just give some consideration to athletic facilities, private or public, because I think that you'll run into some conflict there. So, for instance, Lifetime's a private club. So I think, I guess, determine what they want to handle that on the floor or on a treadmill or whatever somebody might be doing in a class. And I suppose that other private gyms, I think that would be public, would be something of ours, and I, you know, point to Braymore as the significant indoor facility. But, uh, seasons change and we start to move indoors, it's gonna affect basketball players, it's gonna affect a lot of, it's gonna be a lot of sports that could affect it by that. So we should weigh that out and see how that might apply there. I just, I think that's, we should be scratching our collective head a little bit about that.
Uh, yes, Assistant Manager Schaefer?
I wonder if it might work. Uh, I think, Member Anderson, in all of the cases that you're referring to, the governor has issued specific orders around, uh, that kind of programming. So maybe if we would say unless the governor So maybe if we would say, unless the governor has issued specific restrictions around that, then you would refer to that. I think we could craft some language that might be able to mirror that.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Yeah, I think that's a good point, Ms. Schaefer, and, and, and Member Anderson, thanks for bringing it up. I think to the extent that the governor has, and I think it's in phase three, provided for the opening of barber shops and hair salons and things like private gyms or physi-, you know, recreational facilities, to the extent that he has an order in place covering a particular industry, we don't want to be inconsistent with that, and we should defer to that particular order as being controlling. But otherwise, we would have language covering these other elements of it. Does that make sense, Roger?
Yes.
Member Fisher, you look like you're-
Yeah, yeah, I think, I was just going to say, you know, I think Councilmember Staunton hit on it, where it was all of the businesses that stayed open through the duration are the ones that we tend to have the most issue with in terms of people choosing or not choosing to wear masks. All the more recently, recent ones are actually very stringent.
Okay. So, Mr. Knutson, do you want this in the form of a motion?
That's not necessary, Mayor, because it'll just be your proclamation.
Okay. All right. I'm trying to recall what we did with respect to the other orders that we issued that were tied to the curfew, if we voted on those or not. Does anybody recall?
That's a different-
Oh, I'm sorry. You did have the council vote. I don't know that that was required to do so, though, Roger.
Well, initially, under the emergency declaration, the mayor makes the proclamation of the emergency. Then, within a certain number of days, the council has to adopt it, or the mayor goes away. This is different.
Okay. All right, I think we've got everybody's thoughts on this matter, but I'll ask one more time, does anyone on the council wish to comment further? I think we've got a good general direction here, and then we'll circulate that to all the council members. I'd like input on it before I sign off on it.
That's difficult.
I can get a copy out to council members. I think for open meeting law, if I heard from two or more council members who wanted to call a meeting or didn't agree, then we probably would have to go that route.
Understood. Okay, I was thinking more of content, but you're telling me that based on the guidance that you've received from us, I'll be responsible for making sure it reflects the majority opinion of the council?
That's right.
Unless two or more request another special meeting. Member Fisher, did you have something you were thinking about?
Well, it just, this fits perfectly into my number four, the what-if-I'm-wrong test. This basically says, I have no ability to be wrong, because if it all works out fine, we can all take credit, if it doesn't, this is really on the mayor. So it's perfect for the rest of us.
Actually, Member Anderson raised a really great point, and I thought that this, I want to make sure that this was continuing in nature only to the extent that, you know, things stay consistent with what we know now, because as I mentioned in my earlier comments, that things seem to be evolving here. So if three weeks from now, this study comes out from Mike Osterholm and this group of 20 scientists from around the world, and they say masks don't make a lick of difference, then I think we'd want to revisit this. And I think we have the ability to revisit it. Attorney Knutson, isn't that true?
That's absolutely-
Yeah. So I think that's what we'll be doing, is keeping our eye on the data and try to make sure that we're letting data drive us in our decision-making.
Yeah.
Okay. Assistant, what you're thinking about, too?
Sounds like a plan.
All right. Okay, I wish Member Brindle was here, but nonetheless, we wish her well in her meeting. All right, is there anything further that we want to cover? All right, is there a motion to adjourn?
Double.
Move by Member Fisher?
Second.
And Member Anderson? Any further discussion on adjournment? Roll call, please, Ms. Schaefer?
Member Anderson?
Aye.
Member Fisher?
Aye.
Member Staunton?
Aye.
He off? Mayor Hublin?
Aye.
I heard that.
Yeah. All right, we stand adjourned. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Yeah, quit the discussion.